Test, test one, two.
I hereby call the City of Lloydminster, regular council meeting for Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty to order. At this time, we will take a silent moment of personal reflection. As a reminder, all members of council are obligated to declare a conflict of interest or a pecuniary interest as per section one thirty-three of the Lloydminster Charter regarding any item on this agenda. Councillor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. I will be declaring on item six point five point three, um, as it relates to one of my main clients. Included on the list. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Not seeing any others noted, we'll move on to, I'll ask at this time, is there any additions or deletions to this agenda? Not seeing any, I will look to council for direction on item number three, the approval of the agenda presented. Councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that the agenda dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty be approved.
Look for a second, Councillor, uh, Councillor Whiting, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion at this time on this agenda? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number four, the approval of the previous meeting, previous meeting minutes, I'll look for direction from council, Councillor Torson.
I move that the regular council minutes dated November thirtieth, twenty twenty be approved.
Looking for a second, Councillor Fagin, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion before I call for the question on these minutes? Not seeing any, I'll do that. All in favor. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much. Is there any business arising from these minutes at this time that council needs to deal with? Not seeing any, I'll look to the city manager before we start item number six.
Good afternoon, your worship and council. Uh, today I'd just like to, uh, take some time right off the bat to, uh, introduce our new executive manager of Community Development Services, Tracy Simpson, started today to, uh, fill the big shoes, Mr. Don Stang, and I want to thank Don at this time also for his dual role over the last year and a half that he's done as well, but uh, today to welcome Tracy, uh, to Lloydminster, it's her first day today, and she comes to us from Southern Alberta, so looking forward to working with her and getting her asked them to the new role, so.
Thank you, city manager. Welcome, Tracy. Welcome to the team. Moving on to item number six, new business, and six point one, city manager's office, I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, worship, for the first item, twenty twenty-one council committee appointments and deputy mayor's schedule. Uh, the recommendation is that council approve the twenty twenty-one council committee appointments and the deputy mayor, uh, schedule as presented. Uh, the background, the procedural bylaw requires this prior to December thirty-first of each year, that council established the roster for the deputy mayor's schedule for a two-month period on a rotating basis. Amendments to the council committee appointments or deputy mayor's schedule can be done by resolution at any future meeting, so I believe council's had an opportunity to review and discuss with Mayor Albers and worship, uh, this, but, uh, I guess I'll turn it back to you, your worship, for any comments.
Thank you, city manager. As the city manager's outlined, there is a, a list of committees that the city has representatives, uh, appointed to, uh, for various reasons and, uh, all valuable assets to our community and some of those outside our community. Uh, tried to, as the mayor, tried to balance those, uh, ask for your opinions and o- options of interest, and tried to balance that as best as we could with the appointments that, uh, we're putting forward from that perspective, so, uh, and as well as the deputy mayors, if, uh, this has come up in the past from, uh, the previous council, if you're unable to fulfill those, just a conversation that usually happens between the mayor and, uh, the deputy mayor for the time, and we'll make arrangements through the city clerk to bring forward an acting mayor if required, but we've been very fortunate. With the limited travel of the days today and going forward for a little while, I don't think any of us will be going too, too far. That perspective, uh, I'll ask the question, is there any comments or questions or discussion? Not seeing any, I will entertain a motion on this item. Councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that council approve the twenty twenty-one council committee appointments and the twenty twenty-one deputy mayor's schedule as presented.
Thank you, a second, Councillor Dychuk, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor. Closed, carried. Moving on to six point one point two, and I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you again, your worship. Uh, the item before you is the amendment to the annexation transition plan. Uh, the recommendation is that council approve the proposed amendment to the annexation transition plan and direct administration to take all necessary actions to undertake future minor housekeeping amendments to the plan. Um, council had previously approved, uh, this plan, however, uh, one of the items that was not highlighted was the stormwater utility uh, fees, uh, within that plan, and in this case, it is seen to be, uh, by some affected, uh, landowners as a financial disincentive to support the annexation. The background is the purpose of the transition plan is to present services and issues that would be addressed during the proposed annexation process. Uh, these issues were identified during stakeholder engagements on the proposed annexation, and this plan is intended as a communication tool to landowners who will be impacted by the proposed annexation as well as interested members of the public. Um, as I said, one of the items that hasn't been clarified is the stormwater utility, uh, fee. Given the thirty-five-year time horizon of the proposed annexation, applying the stormwater utility fee to predominantly undeveloped agricultural lands before they develop to an urban standard may be perceived as a disincentive to support. Uh, so therefore, in order to address that, uh, we've looked at a waiver for the stormwater utility, uh, until the, the such lands are developed to an urban standard. Uh, once the urban development is, uh, imminent, uh, that be in an area structure plan is approved and subdivision redistricting has occurred, then the stormwater utility fees would be applied. And just to be clear, this is only for the, at this time is only for the annexation area. So the city is also in the process of reviewing our, our, uh, current stormwater utility model for the, uh, existing, uh, parcels within the city. And then, just as a smaller item, uh, as we go along, uh, as we have minor housekeeping items with the annexation transition plan, we're proposing that there's a leniency for administration to make some of those housekeeping items, anything with financial or major impact to the city, uh, that we would bring back to council for approval, but in the meantime, just to keep the process moving, as we have, uh, minor amendments or updates, so we would, uh, we would allow administration to, um, complete those. I'll turn it back to you, your worship, if there's any questions or comments.
Thank you, city manager. Any questions or comments of council for the city manager? Councillor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just, I would just say that I agree with, uh, the logic on removing the stormwater fee on these annexation lines, just on the basic principle that normally happens with annexations, uh, where you're not pushing additional costs or burdens on to, uh, the annexed properties so that there's no effect for them after annexation until a time that, you know, they actually become more urban in nature, so to me, it makes perfect sense that we would apply the same logic that we have to taxes in our transition plan as we do to the stormwater fee. Uh, so I, I think that's a great idea. I just, I think you said quite a bit on the minor housekeeping adjustment items, but can you give me some examples of things that you, administration may be kind of just taking forward and doing kind of on their own, more so on like bylaw enforcement service levels? Things like that?
Yeah, service levels, uh, wording changes, uh, different things like that, anything that has a major impact on the city, we would definitely be bringing back, but if there's some um, service level type stuff that's already in place, or if we transition to a different service level than the city that we could make those adjustments as we go, and we wouldn't have to bring the plan back every time we make those adjustments to city council for approval.
Perfect. That makes sense. Thank you.
Councillor Whiting.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I, I like the idea of, of, you know, these minor changes being on, uh, going through administration without having to come back to council every time. I, I totally agree with that. Is there, I, my only suggestion, is there, you know, every quarter, every month, if there has been a multiple of little changes, does that change something, and should we, should we as council have a little overview, uh, at the, at a quarter or something, just to say, okay, hey, we made these little tweaks, and just keep a running total of those little minor changes so that we can, we can at least see that they haven't created something much larger? I, I highly doubt that. I know, as you mentioned, that anything financial or, or higher, you know, bigger picture would come to council, but just to ensure that there, there's not something being missed, me?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement that we could, we could do that. To date, we haven't had many changes, uh, it came through the INAC committee originally, and then uh, when we moved to the contested annexation, uh, application, then that obviously changed a little bit, so we've had to do some things there, but as we get closer to the, to the hearing date and, and such, that, uh, we could bring that final plan forward, so council's aware of everything. But I would say the brunt of the, the work has already been done, and in some cases, before we moved to the application, uh, we had agreed upon a lot of the items because the, the document that was prepared was done in, in, uh, partnership with the County of Main River, so a lot of that stuff was already taken into account, so this is, uh, this is probably the last major amendment that we foresee, but, uh, I, I, again, I don't want to, I might have just jinxed myself, but, uh.
It could, I, I'm open to whatever. If it comes in through a Friday report or something like that, um, and like, I know I have faith in administration that they're not making any big changes, so.
Yeah, most, most of it would be wording, wording, housekeeping, uh, maybe the odd policy change or something like that, that's, we've already done within the city that we would just incorporate into that transition plan, those types of things.
Councillor Dychuk.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Pardon me. Yeah, I think the other piece for me is that when you look at the property, uh, basically, it's, you know, agricultural land that, that's wide open and that really, any rainfall, excessive rainfall is going to be probably upwards of ninety percent absorbed by that property, as opposed to some of the severe runoff and really intended to be addressed through the levy, so, uh, and, and within the context of the city, you have pavement sidewalks that force the water to run off and not be absorbed, whereas outside of the city and, uh, this property in the annexation, that water's not going anywhere, it's more than likely going to be absorbed downward, so there's, uh, limited, if any, kind of, uh, risk, uh, to the city in that regard.
City manager.
Yeah, these are also, this isn't an uncommon type gestures, type by activity that goes on within an annexation transition plan, as councillor Torson noted on the tax side, that, uh, they, they can maintain their current level of taxation, which everyone benefits them more, um, counties or ours for the next thirty-five years until they meet such a development standard, and so, this point, our tax rate is in is more beneficial to them, so they would follow ours, uh, once, once the annexation happens, but these types of, uh, um, items are not uncommon within a annexation plan.
Any further questions? I'll look for council, uh, direction on, uh, on six point one point two, the amendment to the annexation transition plan. Councillor Whiting.
I move that council approve the proposed amendment to the annexation transition plan and direct administration to take all necessary actions to undertake future minor slash housekeeping amendments to the transition plan.
Look for a second, Councillor Dychuk, very much. Is there any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, I will call. All in favor. Closed, carried. Thank you very much, city manager. Moving on to six point one point three, and I believe back to you again.
Thanks again, your worship. Uh, so the item before you is the, uh, seamless levy, um, so the recommendation today is that the, the council direct the city to withdraw from the seamless levy agreement between the Lloydminster Public School Division and Lloydminster Catholic School Division and the City of Lloydminster. And the second, second part of that would be that council direct administration to enter negotiations with the Lloyd Public and Lloyd Catholic to create a new seamless levy agreement that will take effect January one, twenty twenty-two. The issue at hand is the City of Lloydminster, LPSD and LCSD entered into the seamless levy agreement to ensure equitable programming for all students attending those institutions, whether they are Alberta or Saskatchewan residents. The current seamless levy agreement is over eight years old and does not represent the following for public accounting reporting mechanisms, clear identification of funded activities, stability of funding and appropriate review mechanisms. The current seamless levy does, does not have a review mechanism unless all three signatories approve the amendments, and it does not provide all three parties the opportunity to individually provide one year's notice to the other parties to exit the agreement. By exiting the agreement, the city hopes that all three organizations meet throughout twenty twenty-one to establish an updated agreement that would come into effect January one, twenty twenty-two. The, the agreement would embody the principles of the original agreement and updated principles that balance taxpayer-supported funding to the school divisions, and also the, uh, financial responsibility use of taxpayer dollars, so, uh, just as a highlight to this, uh, Mayor Albers and I did have the opportunity to meet with both school divisions, uh, last week, and, uh, and so they are aware, and, and the discussions were very, uh, favorable, I guess, or, uh, obviously, there's some hesitation or concern every time, anytime you, uh, adjust an agreement, but, uh, both parties understood and, and, uh, discussions went, uh, went okay, so maybe Mayor Albers might have further comment on that, but that's all I've got, so.
I'll add to that. Thank you, city manager. The interesting item that, uh, was brought up by the school boards, which we can appreciate, is that we are working with three different budgets, and when we talk about budgets, they work with provincial budget that comes out in usually April first, it affects them. Then they work with the city budget that comes out January first, and they work on a school year budget from half September until June. So it's, it, it's challenging, and I acknowledge that, and, uh, certainly appreciate the situation, timing, because of our city, uh, timing, it has to work for January first, uh, the new year, and, uh, in twenty twenty-two, from that perspective, I think it's important that we are aware of that, and certainly extended, uh, the discussions to the school boards that we want to move forward with this. Uh, as the city manager alluded to, there's a couple areas that certainly, in particular, would be, we'd like to see addressed in the agreement, and certainly, the school board understood that. Where we go from there, that's, uh, the process to go forward, but I think it's important that, uh, for things, and you know, eight years, and, uh, I could turn it over to someone else on this council table that had a lot of involvement, I believe, with that agreement, and could comment on it, but the, the ability to make adjustments, it wasn't there very easily, and I think this is one of those things we've learnt, uh, the previous council certainly learnt, that, uh, we need to take a look at agreements and make sure that, that there's, all the pieces are there, and this is one of those that we felt could use a little adjustment, so I appreciate the school board's, uh, discussions, making themselves available, uh, late last week, and, uh, their openness and concerns that they expressed, but also their willingness to work with the city to ensure that, at the end of the day, uh, students get the best education they can, being located in a bi-provincial city, which we all know brings challenges to no end, but also some unique opportunities, so I'll leave it at that and welcome any other comments from council. Councillor Torson.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I, I just thought it was important to kind of, at least say that it's unfortunate that there, there is no mechanism for review as it stands right now, so that the only way that we can go about having conversations and potentially negotiating something different, uh, is going through a, a method of, you know, giving one year's notice type of thing, and, and that, you know, that's one of the key, most important things in this is, uh, regardless of all those other things, is those could be added in in future negotiations if there was some tool or mechanisms to allow for future negotiations, so uh, we'll move forward, and I think that, uh, from what I've heard, everything is going to go in a positive direction, and everybody can see kind of where the city's coming from and, and where the school divisions are coming from, and, and I'm just hopeful, as being, I believe, part of this negotiation, uh, through the committees we just appointed ourselves to, that, uh, we'll have a good opportunity to work our way through it and get somewhere that, uh, I think city taxpayers could be satisfied, as well as, you know, protecting some of those programs that they have within those schools that are, you know, much needed, uh, for a lot of them, so thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Whiting.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I, uh, like Jonathan says, I think this is a, a good, very, this is a good, very good thing for our city and our taxpayers, and, and, uh, you know, the, the wording does sound bad when the, when the, when it goes to the public, it might sound like we're withdrawing, and, but, uh, really, it's, it's to become more efficient, to be, um, to, to, and, and what, one thing that I learnt, uh, that I didn't know before, that it is, it doesn't really reflect on, on the amount of students, it just is based directly to, uh, to our taxation assessment, so it doesn't, it, uh, is definitely missing the mark there, but I'm excited that, uh, we're going to see some, some new conversation on this, and it is an important piece, and that's what I am here to say, is that I definitely support a seamless levy, but given that we have some challenges being on a border, and, uh, I look forward to the, the final result.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Dychuk.
Yeah, thanks, worship. I, I just add to that as well, I, you know, the, the, some of the pieces that have been raised, um, was part of that initial agreement, and really was about addressing so those inequities and program differences where one province provided one program, and, and then, you know, people were struggling, and, and maybe I should send my kids to live with my grandparents on the other side of the city, because they get more services, and so it was, we needed to have service that could be, uh, seamless, irrespective of where you lived, and, and really, uh, at the same time, being it provide the programs that each province had sort of said, if you're Albertan, you should have access to this program, if you're Saskatchewan, you should have access to that program as well. Uh, it, it becomes even more complicated, I think, in part because when you look at the systems of funding and, and if you want to get online and get really excited by reading the, the funding processes they have in education in Alberta, it tends to be based on a per people allotment. You have one child, you get a funding amount depending on the grade, the level and type of program, and Saskatchewan, they fund based on schools. So you have a school based of a hundred twenty-five kids, they're going to fund you based on a secretary, a principal, and so on and so forth, so it's a different structure, and it makes it even more complicated, as you're trying to create equity in your, within the community, and, and trying to look at not only sort of having, uh, equal numbers of staffs, children per classroom and all the rest of it, uh, those differences make, make life pretty complicated, living in the bi-provincial environment. And this seamless levy goes a long way to ensuring that you, you can get past that difference, and really just focus on the job at hand, which is about giving the best education possible to students, so there's a lot of value in this program. Uh, I agree with the principles that have been outlined, and I think, you know, there was really a, a strong push at the time because of the structures that were changing and, and funding gaps and, and concerns, and we've come a long way since then, and I think, uh, the timing's good, the timing's right, and I think it's an opportunity with, uh, certainly new council here at this time, and, uh, everybody's positive about it, and I, I can see that, you know, as long as we all go in understanding there's benefit to this, and I think that's pretty clear, uh, we should be able to come away with a good resolve for the, for the community members, and most importantly, students.
Absolutely. Any further discussion, comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction on six point one point three, the seamless education levy. Councillor Dychuk.
Move that council direct the city. Move that council direct the city to withdraw from the seamless levy agreement between Lloydminster Public School Division, LPSD, and Lloydminster Catholic School Division, LCSD, and the City of Lloydminster, and that council direct administration to either enter negotiations with LPSD and LCSD to create a new seamless levy agreement that will take effect January one, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Look for a second, Councillor Buckingham, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question? Let's see, Councillor Buckingham.
Just curious, procedurally, uh, does there need to be a, a separate second motion for that as it's presented here, or can we do that all in one motion?
City clerk.
I, I think we've captured the essence of what council wants us to do, is to exit the agreement and enter into negotiations for a new one, in that one motion.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, any further discussion? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor. Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, city manager. Moving on to six point two, the office of the city clerk, I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, worship, for six point two point one, Sawmill Restaurant, Lloydminster Property Limited property tax cancellation request. I will ask Scott Preddy to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship and council.
Good afternoon, Scott.
Our recommendation is that council does not approve the request for cancellation up to two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty municipal levies for Sawmill Restaurant, Lloydminster Property Limited. Property owners requesting cancellation under two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty municipal levies due to the economic downturn and COVID nineteen pandemic. Council received a letter dated November sixteen, twenty twenty, from Sawmill Restaurant, Lloydminster Property Limited, cancellation of the two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty municipal levies. Property owner presented before council at the November thirtieth, twenty twenty, regular council meeting. Council does have the option under section two nine five of the Lloydminster Charter, if it considers it equitable to do so, to cancel, reduce tax arrears, cancel or refund all or part of tax, or defer to collection of tax. No tax cancellation has ever been approved under section two nine five of the Lloydminster Charter, as far as administration is aware. Council received a similar request from the same property owner in two thousand seventeen, and denied the requested property tax cancellation. Option one is that council does not approve the request for cancellation of the two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty municipal levies for the Sawmill Restaurant. Option two is that council approved the requests for cancellation for the two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty municipal levies. Or option three, the council requests further information and brought back to future council meeting. That budget is the two thousand nineteen property taxes have already been paid by the Sawmill Restaurant, Lloydminster Property Limited. However, cancellation of the two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty municipal levy would write off approximately fifty-five thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. Cancellation of these property taxes will be inequable to other properties within the city that paid their taxes. And just to, uh, as far as we can tell, uh, your worship, the property owners asked for municipal only, and that's what the fifty-five thousand dollars would be. If it was education as well, it'd be over seventy-five thousand dollars. I'll pass it back to you, worship.
Thank you very much, Scott. Questions, comments? Councillor Torson.
Thank you, your worship. So this is something I may have misunderstood last time around, so they're looking for a refund of the twenty nineteen taxes already paid?
That, that would be correct. If council passed nineteen and twenty, then we would have to refund them.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, worship. I, I really struggle with this, and I can't see how, I, I just can't support it. Uh, there are a lot of other mechanisms, and I, I was pleased to hear when we asked, uh, uh, the lady who presented that, you know, they have explored federal options, they have explored uh, opportunities with their, their financial organization as well, and, uh, outside of that, I'm really not sure how our role, uh, to support properties and businesses in the community to that extent uh, shows up, while the charter says that we do have that opportunity to do so. Uh, I, I have yet to hear of any instances where we've done that in our history as a city, and I would question whether other cities have in fact done the same thing as well. Uh, so I, I can't support this. I, I regret, obviously, the circumstances that they're in, uh, they are beyond our control. Uh, but the instant we open the door for one business, I'm, you know, certain based on the survey that the, um, that was conducted within the city through our economic development and, and, pardon me, the recovery committee, you know, fourteen percent or thereabouts of our businesses are unsure uh, if, if they will reopen after the COVID, and, uh, the list, the list is there potentially of a, of a lineup to be coming to council for reimbursements, and I'm not really sure where we'd get the money, uh, and, and we, we're not in the business of guaranteeing success, uh, nor are we in the business of guaranteeing failure for businesses. Our role is to make sure that we're available for business, and outside of that, it's really up to individual entrepreneurs to make the best decisions, available to them to do good business and make money, uh, so I, I, I can't support the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions or comments? I think, uh, I have to share some of those comments that Councillor Dychuk said, that the survey, our business community is hurting. I, I, to find a business that'll tell you that their business is better than it was a year ago, you'd be very far stretched, uh, some. Uh, some businesses have maintained fairly closely, others have certainly suffered. And I, I can appreciate the Sawmill and their, their, the discussion around that, their business plan. But as Counselor Dykachuk mentioned, uh, the survey was very clear, fourteen percent of the businesses have suffered a great deal. And I'm sure if we sent that survey out again, and number would increase. And this is, as they say, the slippery slope that we would step onto, uh, to give one tax credit. Uh, where does that end? Because I think every business owner could make a case for their, their taxes to be lowered. At the end of the day, uh, the service requirements of this community has not changed. Roads continue to get plowed. Water continues to get delivered, sewage, garbage, as well as all the infrastructure that supports the city, that the recreation and culture and the pieces to it. So it is very challenging. I, I feel for business owners today and every business owner, not just Sawmill. But at the same token, I think we also have a fiduciary interest of all taxpayers in this community, those that have paid their taxes on time. Those that are, uh, have not, you understand, but there are mechanisms in place that we've tried to provide as best as we could. Anyone else have any other comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction from council on six point two point one. Counselor Whitey.
I move that council does not approve the request for cancellation of the two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty municipal levies. For Sawmill Restaurant Lloydminster Property Limited.
Second, Counselor Dykachuk, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question? Not seeing any, I'll call it. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Scott, but I believe you're back up again through the city manager.
Thank you, your worship. Our recommendation is that council does not approve the request for cancellation of the November penalty on the late payment of property taxes. For one zero one one seven eight four oh two Saskatchewan Limited. Property owners requesting a cancellation of the November penalty due to late payment of property taxes. The two thousand twenty property tax notices were mailed on May twenty-second, twenty twenty. Property taxes were due upon date of mailing. The penalty date was extended by council for all taxpayers this year from July tenth to November tenth due to circumstances of COVID nineteen. The city advertised this extensively between May and November through multiple forms of media, including city website, city social media. Local newspaper and local radio. The penalty was applied to all outstanding two thousand twenty property taxes after all payments for November tenth were posted. The property owner came into city hall on November nineteenth and paid the original two thousand twenty property tax levy, but disputed the penalty that had been applied. He refused, he requested to speak to council regarding the penalty and was given the opportunity to present to council at the November thirtieth regular council meeting. Council had been requested to make a decision on the request of penalty cancellation. Council does have the option under section two nine five of Lloydminster Charter if it considers it equitable to do so. Option one is that council does not approve the request for cancellation for the November penalty. On the late payment of property taxes for one zero one one seven eight four oh two Saskatchewan Limited. Option two, the council does approve the request for cancellation of the November penalty, the late payment of property taxes. Or option three, the council requests further information be brought back for council. The property tax penalty bylaw number eighteen dash two zero one nine, along with amendments, defined the penalty date. By which property taxes must be paid, paid before penalties are charged. Cancellation of the penalty applied in accordance with this bylaw would contradict the bylaw and may set a precedent for anyone. To have their pro- penalty canceled if they bring it forward to council. Cancellation of this penalty would result in a decrease of seventy hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Pass it back to you worship.
Thank you very much, Scott. I'll look to council for comments. Counselor Dykachuk.
Thanks worship. Uh, thanks Scott for this. Uh, the, the owner, uh, that, that's met with us and spoke with us, he's owned this property for some time.
Yes.
So the taxes showing up to be paid are not a surprise at this point and they've been well advertised. Um, the only other question I guess I did have is under what circumstances might we accept a late payment? I mean, we have this, you know, there's nothing certain about life other than death and taxes, right?
Yeah.
So you own this property before, you're familiar with the process, you pay your taxes to the city, we've advertised the dates, we've shared all the information. Is there ever been an opportunity where we've said, you know, under this circumstances, we would, we would recognize that there's a reason. That would support a delay or waiving a late payment?
The only, uh, thank you Counselor Dykachuk for the question. The only time that I would reverse a penalty is if the check showed up in the mail. It was postmark, well, postmarked in advance of the deadline date. So it was a postal Canada Post issue or something like that. Other than that, uh, if payment online, it's normally takes two, three days for payments online. So if someone paid on the tenth. It could show up late, so we would reverse the payments after that. But other than that, uh, any, any other penalties would have to be canceled through, uh, through council.
Thank you.
Any further? Counselor Whitey.
Yeah, just uh, not, not too much I can say, other than again, I don't, I don't support uh, this. There has to be a line drawn in the sand and we've moved that line already by extending the deadline of, of the due date. And uh, it's, it is an unfortunate error and it, in kid, this case, it was a costly error and uh, but it is an error nonetheless. And just uh, yeah, if, if we do it for one, we have to do it for all. So not in favor and uh, my apologies.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Torsten.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the nor- normally the penalty date is July tenth roughly, correct? And then, and normally they're still due upon mailing, that.
Under the bylaw, they're due upon mailing and uh, council this year for COVID relief actually canceled the penalty in July tenth and September tenth.
Thanks. Yeah, so I understand, you know, why we'll say business in general. Use the, we'll say the opportunity for somewhat of a deferral um, by using that penalty date and saying, okay. Let's make sure we've got all our ducks in a row, maybe the cash isn't coming in quite the way we wanted it to in March and April and things like that. To kind of bridge yourself out a, a little bit, but at, at the same time, uh, from the moment that those taxes were mailed, they were due. So you, you know, the, the clock was ticking, I guess, for an extra uh, four months. Where an individual would have the opportunity to, to make that payment, to ensure that there was no penalties applied. And, and I get it, I feel for the, the situation of this one, just based on the circumstances of, of what happened in terms of the story. And it, it's really unfortunate. Um. But, but I agree with, with everything I've heard around as far as kind of drawing the line in the sand and that line in the sand was November tenth. And you know, there's an extra kind of four months before a penalty would be applied as per, or rather than usual. Um, I did have one other question though, when is the next penalty date? So if you had arrears outstanding where, you know, additional penalties or interest would act onto it.
It would normally be uh, in January, but council has pushed that to February tenth as part of the COVID relief.
So I, I guess my only request would be is that, you know, and I know that the tax group does this all the time. Is just to reach out and see if you can come up with a payment plan to make it palatable, palatable for the individual. So that they can get back to squared up prior to that date. Um, unfortunate, but at the end of the day, that's just kind of how it goes sometimes.
Yeah, thank you, guy, Counselor Torsten. We've already sent out arrears letters to everyone that was charged a penalty, notifying them that the next penalty date will be February tenth. So to give them a good opportunity to pay before that penalty date.
Okay.
And it would only be a five percent penalty on the arrears at that point, not on the total amount.
Okay.
So it would only be on the seventy hundred dollars in this case.
Okay.
Certainly, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Protol's uh, presentation that he made in November at the council meeting. And he asked three questions and I'll be responding to those questions directly, just so he, if he's uh, listening or watching today. Uh, the proceedings that he had three questions regarding uh, taxation and some things like that. So uh, because they were separate from the issue of the penalty, that perspective. But certainly I agree with what the council said around the table. It's very unfortunate. But uh, you know, challenges do arise and I think it's very similar in some natures. That again, establishing a new protocol is not uh, what we'd like to do at this time. It was not the intent. We went the extent of giving people the ability till November tenth to pay taxes. Which ninety point five percent, I believe, of the taxpayers had their taxes paid by November tenth.
Just over ninety percent.
Just over ninety. Thank you very much, Scott. So bottom line is, I think that uh, you know, there, we did do our best. And uh, circumstances do arise, but those we cannot handle on an individual basis. Uh, city went extensively with the notifications across newspaper, radio, social media. I saw several different posts on Facebook and different things like that to ensure that people were aware of it. I know timing is always a challenge, that perspective. Thank you very much. Is there any other further comments, Counselor Buckingham?
Thank you, worship. I think it's worth noting that, and I, I stand to be correct, that I'll ask maybe Scott or the city clerk or someone to verify what I'm saying. But I don't believe that anybody in Alberta or Saskatchewan extended their penalty date further than we did. I think we were amongst the leaders in giving the most leeway as far as collecting those taxes go. And I think that's worth mentioning now that the council took that upon us to make sure we gave as much as we possibly could. And I think it was more than any other jurisdiction in either province.
Um, to, to our knowledge, that's correct. Um, we, we did that specifically so we could benefit our taxpayers.
I, I was just gonna mention.
Oh, Counselor Torsten.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that I, I looked this up and we were actually the most lenient in the country. By far. That penalty, like the, the next closest would have been late September, I think, or maybe early October.
Yeah, I think, I, I just wanted to bring it up because I think it, you know, we're cognizant of the situation. Um, and we did everything we possibly could do and more, uh, to make sure that we gave everybody the opportunity that we could give them. So it just, I don't, that, that kind of thing doesn't get brought up a lot, is that we, we are looking and we are listening and we are watching. And here we took a leadership role and went further than anybody else. So just, this seemed like the appropriate time to remind our taxpayers of that.
Thank you, Counselor Buckingham. Any further discussion or comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction on six point two point two, uh, one zero one one seven eight four oh two Saskatchewan Limited penalty cancellation. Counselor Torsten.
I move that council does not approve the request for cancellation of the November penalty on the late payment of property taxes. For one zero one one seven eight four oh two Saskatchewan Limited.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Aaron. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question before I call it? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Scott, and I believe through the city manager, back to you one more time.
Thank you again, your worship. Our recommendation is that council approve the nonprofit property tax exemptions as outlined in attachment A. For a maximum three-year period in accordance with the nonprofit organization property tax exemption policy. Administration seeking approval of the nonprofit property tax exemptions for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three. In order to enable the assessors to update the annual assessment roll. Council approved the nonprofit organization property tax exemption policy in two thousand eighteen. Policy set the di- deadline for submission of applications to September thirtieth of the year preceding the taxation year. All exemptions that had previously been approved by council were expiring and need to be reapplied for in accordance with the policy. This year, administration received a total of thirty-seven property tax exemption applications for nonprofit organizations. This included nine applications for properties that did not previously have an exemption approved. The nine new applications all came from organizations that already had exemptions approv- approved for other properties they owned. Administration has reviewed them and determined that thirty-six of the applications met the requirements of the nonprofit organization property tax exemption policy. Property that did not meet the requirements withdrew their application. Should council approve the nonprofit property tax exemptions for a maximum three-year period? It will allow the assessors to update the annual assessment roll and the assessment codes would not have to be updated again during this period unless there are changes to the organization. Or property that changed the exemption status. So option one is that council approved the nonprofit property tax exemption as outlined in attachment A for a maximum three-year period. Option two is that council approved the nonprofit property tax exemption as outlined in attachment A for a period less than three years. Or option three, the council requests further information be brought forward to a future council meeting. As far as budgets, the properties that are approved as exempt will have the assessment codes changed to exempt on the assessment roll based on the current mill rate. The approval of the additional applications in attachment A will result in a decrease of eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. I'll pass it back to you worship.
Thank you, Scott. Questions or comments? Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, Scott. Um, this is something that we've been working towards for some time over the last number of years. To bring all of these uh, nonprofit organizations property tax exemptions on the same cycle. Um, previously in the past, it had been some here and some there, different dates and people were missed and so on and so forth. So this is kind of the final piece of bringing this all together into one spot. So that those exemptions expire at the same time for everybody, every year, every three years. Doesn't have to come back to council all the time and everybody knows when they have to put those submissions in, tightens up the lines for them. So it's just become standard procedure. This is the, the last step and what, this is maybe the third time we've had to do this in the last three or four years. To get it to here so that it's all gonna be one time going forward.
Uh, that's correct. That was our intent, was to get everyone on board. Of course, there's still an opportunity where nonprofit that has never applied could come forward in future years. And we'd have to bring those forward, but that was our intention is to get everyone where we could come and do it all in one.
But this is, this is ninety-five percent plus of, of the, the work we've been doing, or not we, you and your team have been doing. Uh, over the last number of years to put the, bring this all into alignment.
Yes, that's correct.
So thanks for all of your, all of your work on that. As a nonprofit organizations well know, every dollar counts. And uh, even the administration of trying to apply for a, a property tax exemption every year or every so often is uh, just another step that they have to take. So now that we can do this over this three-year period alleviates our administrative work, alleviates their administrative work and brings everything into alignment. So thanks for all that.
Counselor Torsten.
Thank you, your worship. Um, so I'm not sure if this is a, a timing thing of one of, some of the organizations moved. But there was a whole bunch more that I think I was expecting to see on this list that we didn't, that may have missed the deadline. And we're probably, you know, a little ways away from a bunch of places asking for us for an exemption. Because I think everyone in the community services building, I would think that moved into another property would have had to apply or would they apply in following years?
They would have to apply, but there's, just because you're a nonprofit doesn't necessarily mean you're exempt. So they would have to apply, meet to, meet our policy and meet the regulations of COPTER. So, but uh, like I said, there was only one that applied that didn't need qualifications.
Okay, so that, fair enough. So, but do you know if there was an expectation, at least internally, that we thought some of those groups would be applying? And, and they didn't?
Uh, I've, no, I don't. Previous years they didn't because they were in our building.
Right.
Um, like I said, they, I think some has reached out, but never applied.
Okay, thank you.
We would normally give them what the regulations are and then they would make determination themselves whether they think they qualify and then it would come through for our review.
Alright, yeah, it's just ones that, and I don't know specifically where the individual ones have moved to. So Lloyd Learning Council, I'm not really sure where they've moved to, but you know, to me, they would fit within these parameters. And they would have never had to apply before because they were in the community services building and ones like that. So, um, I guess we'll see what happens.
Thanks, Counselor, Counselor Whitey.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Um, just a bit of education for myself, I guess, uh, trying to um, just get uh, educated on this piece. Thirty-six is the total right now. And this is, cause this is from my understanding from counsel Buckingham, that this is kind of working to this point. We've now got a, this in place, so it's uh, it can be budgeted and predicted for these nonprofits and that's perfect. I'm, I'm all for that. Uh, thirty-six applicants or approved applicants, is that the total right now at this time for this?
That's the total we have for this. Yeah, each year we've been bringing forward a few here and there, trying to get everybody on the same cycle, as Counselor Buckingham just pointed out. So now this is everybody, everyone else, everyone has expired this year in two thousand twenty, but they're asking for renewal now for two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
So we have a total of thirty-six nonprofits that I'm requesting exemption for today.
Gotcha. So then when is there, there is opportunities for, for other nonprofits? If they realize that they missed out or something has changed, they can apply for this exemption still in the, in this three-year window?
The, the way, yes. The way it works is that uh, they can apply every, up to every September of the year preceding the tax. So they've already missed the deadline for two thousand twenty-one, so they can apply for two thousand twenty-two as long as they apply before September of next year.
Right.
And the only way they can apply for two thousand twenty-one at this point would be if they move to a new location that's currently taxable. Or if they purchase a building they didn't have as of September thirtieth.
Okay.
So they can come forward and we would have to bring that forward to council and ask them to exempt them because they couldn't apply for something they didn't have at the time.
And then, does that put them into, so if it's next year, does that mean they're put into a two-year, so that everybody becomes on this three-year cycle?
Yes, that's what we would do. We would bring it forward and ask for a two-year exemption and then if it was the year after, we would ask for a one-year exemption.
Perfect. Okay, good. And I thought I had another question in my head, but I think, I think that's it for now. Yep.
Thanks, counselor. Scott, if I could, what is the, you, uh, we understand the three years and totally acceptable and understandable. What's the mechanism the city has to ensure that something hasn't changed? What uh, do we, is there like a spot check done just from that perspective? Because if someone was to uh, discontinue their operations as a nonprofit due to the economy and the climate we exist in. What, what would be there to help ensure that the taxation is being fair? I guess that's what's, we understand why we're doing what we're doing, but on the sa- flip side, if I was a taxpayer, what's the mechanism that you could share with us? That, that ensures that something could happen within three years?
Yeah, so each August and September, we reach out to all these nonprofits. We ask for information on. We ask for information on if anything's changed with their organization. So this, we still make sure they got a nonprofit, you know, the, the numbers that they require that is still open to the public. So we, we actually do it ourselves, but we make sure it meets all the criteria of COPTER in our policy. And if anything changes, then we would change the exemption status.
Terrific. So there's no application form, it's just simply a, uh, either a phone call or a letter or however.
It could simply be a conversation or an email, uh, just to say what's changed in your, in your organization this year. And usually the answer is nothing and we're, we're good. But if anything catches our eye, we'll do a little more investigation to make sure that the property owner is getting the exemption they should get.
Terrific. I think that's really what I was after was just knowing that there's a checks and balances.
Yeah, we do every year.
And you've indicated that, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction from council on six point two point three, the nonprofit property tax exemptions for twenty one, twenty three. Councilor Aaron.
I make the motion that council approve, oh, sorry, the nonprofit property tax exemptions as outlined in attachment A for the maximum three year period in accordance with the nonprofit organization property tax exemptions policy.
Thank you very much. For a secondar. Councilor Buckingham, thank you very much. Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, Scott. Moving on to agenda item six point two point four, city manager.
Thank you, worship, for six point two point four, twenty twenty one meeting schedule and governing procedure. I'll ask the city clerk Doug Rodwell to present.
City clerk.
Thank you, worship. The item before you is the twenty twenty one meeting schedule and governing procedure. And the recommendation is the council approved the twenty twenty one meeting schedule as presented. Additionally, that the Roberts Rules of Order twelfth edition be used by council and council committees if the Lloydminster Charter or the Procedure Bylaw are silent on a matter. Procedure Bylaw requires the city council to establish the schedules for the upcoming years council and committee meetings. No later than December thirty first of each year. Amendments to the meeting schedule can be done by resolution at any future council meeting. And the options are that council approved the twenty twenty one meeting schedule as presented. Additionally, the Robert Rules of Order twelfth edition be used for account by council and council committees. If the Lloydminster Charter or the Procedure Bylaw are silent on a matter, or council not approve a meeting schedule and the council requests further information. I'll pass it back to you, worship.
Thank you very much, city clerk. Questions or comments, Councilor Whiting?
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, I had, uh, I had asked, uh, council and admin to, to consider the opportunity to do a, maybe a look at pursuing a Tuesday meeting. But after the discussion and hearing from fellow counselors on, on what would have to change in their personal lives to do that, of course, uh, I'm happy to, to, uh, to approve this Monday schedule. It, uh, it works good for everybody and I'm happy for that, but I appreciate the opportunity to explore the, the Tuesday schedule.
Thank you, Councilor. I think it's always good that we, we keep our eyes and minds open and that's, appreciate you bringing that forward. Any other comments, Councilor Torson?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Just to that point, if, if there's any consideration of, of doing that is if it could be brought to like an August GPC. Uh, because I think that before kind of life gets moving again as school year start and the summer's over, I think that that would be a good time to have that discussion. Uh, cause otherwise you could end up in a scenario where we are right now where you're midway through a school year or through winter activities or whatever else is going on, uh, that now people might be less malleable at that point.
Point well taken, well taken. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Buckingham.
Sorry, worship, I was just, uh, trying to, to see that date. Um, is it required, uh, when we're doing these, um, conference, uh, agendas and so on and so forth? I believe that, uh, AUMA has come up with the, the seventeenth of November now is the, is the week that they would potentially do a conference for AUMA. I'm just trying to verify that date here.
Okay.
Once, once AUMA decides a council or on a meeting date or a conference date, then we can look at the, uh, meeting schedule and we can bring amendment to that meeting schedule at that time if there's any effect to, uh, council.
Yeah, I just found that it is, AUMA has designated November seventeenth and nineteenth as their convention dates. Just if we're putting the schedule publicly or whatever, all the other ones are there. So that is the date that they are proposing.
Okay. Which by the looks of it is clear of any council meetings, which is good, but it's, uh, just fills in that month of November. And, uh, just for members, uh, uh, new members of the council, uh, that convention usually happens in September. But because there is a, uh, municipal election scheduled for Alberta, they will have that, uh, carried out this fall and that'll move the convention to November so that everyone has a chance to get settled and sworn into their new roles, uh, if that's what happens in elections. So otherwise that's a September convention. We try and, other than Saskatchewan who likes to go early in February, we try and stay out of the winter months, but, uh, it's the way it works. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction. Oh, Councilor Torson. Oh, you make the motion, I would, I would accept that motion.
I move that council approved the twenty twenty one meeting schedule as presented. Additionally, the Roberts Rules of Order twelfth edition be used by council and council committees if the Lloydminster Charter or the Procedure Bylaw are silent on a matter.
Secondar, Councilor Fagman, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion that's been presented? Not seeing any, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, city clerk. And, uh, through the city manager back to the city clerk for six point two point five.
Thank you, worship. The matter before you is Lloydminster Library Board Appointments. And the recommendation is that council approve the appointment of Stephanie Brown Monroe to the Lloydminster Library Board for a three year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three. And the council reappoints Stephen Tao and Brittany Murphy to Lloydminster Library Board for a second three year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Lloydminster Public Library Board has requested council appoint the representatives to the board. And the city of Lloydminster passed Bylaw number twenty two dash two zero two zero in August of twenty twenty formed the Lloydminster Library Board. As part of the bylaw, all library board appointments shall be appointed by council. Lloydminster Public Library has provided the attached recommendation for the board appointments. And I'll pass it back to you and also your worship.
Thank you very much, city clerk. Any questions or comments on, uh, the request? Not seeing any, Councilor Torson.
Does the library board know what they're getting themselves into there?
Uh, I believe that, uh, the individuals have, uh, have served on the library board in one capacity or another and, uh, are quite versed in their respective duties. That sounds much as.
For the record, I know that she'd be watching this part, so that's why.
I figured you might just, it does.
Wouldn't do it behind your back.
Wouldn't leave it past you. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I'll make that motion. But actually, I'll just one other comment. As someone who sat on the library board for a period of time, I can say that, you know, the city's incredibly lucky to have Stephen and, uh, Brittany come back for another term as well as Stephanie choosing to put her name on there. I know she added a lot of value while she was on there, um, from our role in council. But also the feedback I've got from the library board is they've been very, very happy with her contributions up to this point. And, and I can tell you, Stephen is a guy with, uh, with a background in municipal libraries. I believe he served in Cold Lake or Lacklavish, somewhere like that in a municipal library. Uh, he brings a lot to the table and, and Brittany is, you know, from her perspective as well as a young mom, I think, brings something special, especially as they're going through the transition into a new, uh, space and trying to revitalize what the library can be to the community. I think these are three really strong people to bring to the table and lucky to have Laura Lee joining them as well now, so. You know, I, I'd be willing to make that motion.
Uh, before we make that motion, city clerk?
And if I could ask for two separate motions.
I will allow that to happen. All right, I move that council approved the appointment of Stephanie Brown Monroe to the Lloydminster Library Board for a three year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, Councilor, seconded by Councilor Aaron. Any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Councilor Torson.
I move that council reappoints Stephen Tao and Brittany Murphy to the Lloydminster Library Board for a second three year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
For a secondar, Councilor Aaron, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, city clerk. Moving on to six point two point six, six point two point six, yes, city manager.
Thank you, worship, for six point two point six, policy number two, three, zero, dash, zero, one, the fire service levels policy. I'll ask Chief, uh, Lisa Wiki to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Uh, Fire Service Administration is here today to have council approve policy number two, three, zero, dash, zero, one, fire service levels policy. Um, the issue here today is that there is currently no formal fire service levels policy in place for this Lloydminster Fire Service. At the April fourteenth, twenty twenty Governance and Priorities Committee meeting, the committee was informed of the Fire Service Master Plan Comprehensive Implementation Plan, which identified several recommendations for efficiencies within the Lloydminster Fire Service. Fire Service Administration has been working to implement these recommendations with one being the creation of a fire service levels policy. The city of Lloydminster Fire Service has stated that it will continue to prioritize the delivery of a comprehensive fire protection model that provides the most effective and efficient level of fire protection services resulting in the best value for the community. At the December seventh, twenty twenty Governance and Priorities Committee meeting, the committee recommended that the fire service levels policy be brought forward to the next regular council meeting for consideration. Options in front of council are that, uh, you approve policy number two, three, zero, dash, zero, one, or you do not approve policy number two, three, zero, dash, zero, one, or bring it back, um, for further information at a later date. And I'll pass it back.
Thank you, chief. Questions or comments? Chief, I know on the agenda we'll be dealing with the first reading of the bylaw that also works hand in hand with this policy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Councilor Torson.
Thank you, worship. Well, luckily this one's been through the, the wringer a couple of times. And to me, I think it, it does a great job of exactly what it's supposed to do within our fire master plan, which is to really just state the service levels that exist within our community so that the average person reading it could understand. All right, what does the Lloydminster Fire Service do? And we're stating that to me pretty clearly and also stating where the, some of those limitations are. So I, I just think that all around, uh, it, it's well done from a perspective of doing what it's supposed to do.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? I think that, uh, appreciate Councilor Torson's comments and I think, uh, the, a policy is very important. That's, uh, lays hand in hand with the bylaw, gives the fire service and, uh, professional team that we have employed working with us, uh, some direction that they're always looking for, I believe, chief and, uh, yourself from, uh, the administrative end that we provide via the city manager. And I think this, uh, this is a, a great first step. This is something we've never had, I don't believe. So, uh, this is the first for Lloydminster and, uh, great to see that, uh, we've got to this point and move forward to let people know that they are, there is a service there. It lays out the conditions that we're providing, uh, for both the safety of the firefighters, but also for the residents and businesses.
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction on six point two point six, Councilor Torson.
I move that council approve policy number two, thirty, dash, zero, one, fire services, fire service levels policy.
Look for a secondar. Councilor Dychuk, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the policy presented? Not seeing any, I will call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thanks very much, chief. Moving on to six point three, city manager.
Thank you, worship, for six point three point one, policy number one, three, four, dash, oh, seven, debt management for capital expenditures policy. I'll ask CFO Denise McDonald to present.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Uh, before you is policy number one, three, four, oh, seven, uh, debt management for capital expenditure policy was brought forward to the Governance and Priority Committee meeting on December seventh. And since then, we have made some consistencies on, in calling it debt management for capital expenditures in, in place of projects, capital projects. So we looked at the wording and made it a little more concise. Uh, we moved the lease financing agreements to, uh, be included. But, uh, once, once the analysis is done, proving that leasing is a viable option, it's no longer subject to the requirements of the policy. And then the minimum threshold of one million still stands. However, we've added the wording unless otherwise approved by council that will add to allow council the opportunity to consider other projects with lesser amounts or, um, if there is a considerable amount of maintenance, say, I think the discussion was around water and sewer under extenuating circumstances, council can always add it under that clause. So with that, it's open for questions of council.
Thank you, CFO. Any questions or comments? Again, this policy has had a chance to make its way through, uh, GPC and some input from council. I appreciate the changes that were made, CFO. I think that, uh, covers off both the naming, as you indicated, as well as giving council a little bit of flexibility should we need it or the councils after this council has that ability without having to redraft a policy. Did I open any comments or any other questions? Well, this GPC thing is a good thing. I'll look for direction from council, Councilor Whiting.
Oh, let me go back to that screen. Uh, I move that council approve policy number one, three, four, dash, zero, seven, which is debt management for capital expenditures policy.
Thank you very much, secondar, Councilor Buckingham. Any further discussion or questions? Not seeing any, oh, Councilor Torson.
It's just, uh, thank you, worship, one thing that's just kinda, I don't know if it's eating at me or not, but this, when we talk about the lease financing, and I know that was my comment before and we've now removed it. Um, but to me, this is referring more as a operating lease rather than a capital lease. So in a scenario where you have a capital lease, let's say, let's say, um, you know, at one time there was a conversation and all it was, was a conversation about rebuilding the Cultural and Science Center on its existing space and doing a lease own type option, which I said would be a capital lease and probably wouldn't, wouldn't be able to fly because it would affect the debt limit all the same. In scenarios like that, to me, the lease would still be included in that area all the same. So I just don't know if, if that's too specific that the bylaw can't do all of that. You know what I mean? So we're, we pulled the lease wording out now. Um, but the lease still could be considered under the debt management as well. So that's why I'm.
Yes, any.
Unless it's included somewhere else that I'm not seeing.
The, the point of how, including it in here is that we don't have a lease policy per se. And because of that, we needed to identify that any leases with regard to purchasing of buildings or equipment or would, would still require analysis whether, what is the best financial tool to use for it? And once that analysis is done and if it's considered that leasing is the most viable option, then, then it doesn't have to be a million dollars. It could be less, it could be more. So the idea was to include it in here because there's no place else to include it right now.
Right. Okay, I think I'm on the same page now. I, I understand what you're saying now. Okay, sorry.
No problem.
When I read it, I, I was good with it, but then when you were describing it, for some reason I got thrown off. So we're good. Thank you.
Any other questions before I call for the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, CFO. Moving on to item number six point four, Community Development Services.
Thank you, worship, for six point four point one, Community Services Advisory Committee Appointments. I'll ask Patrick Lancaster to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, your worship. Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon, Patrick.
The Community Services Advisory Committee has requested council appoint a representative to the Community Services Advisory Committee for a two year term. Having put a call for application or a call for volunteer applicants up to the community, uh, the Community Advisory Committee has undergone a vetting process by which, uh, four, four candidates were interviewed. And, uh, of those four, uh, they've made a recommendation to council for an appointment. The, uh, Community Services Advisory Committee, uh, is a group of volunteers that serve, uh, the city by reviewing, uh, requests for municipal grants and providing recommendations to council. The recommended appointee, uh, from the, the group is Sarah Patterson. And the, the committee is requesting a two year term ending December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Any questions or comments? Councilor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Um, I was thrilled with this process because, um, there were so many applicants that came forward from the community. And this just speaks to the community, in my opinion. Um, this is a volunteer, non glorious, non paid, uh, any kind of type thing position. And we had a great number of, of people apply to sit on this advisory committee. So I just wanted to thank all the applicants and, uh, and everybody that applied for this, uh, appointment. So I just wanted to thank all the applicants and everybody that applied for this appointment. Because like I said, it speaks to the, the depth of our community and the people that live in our community that want to be involved in a process like this. So I was thrilled to go through this process and have so many applicants.
Thank you, counselor. I think the number's right. Four members of this council have sat through it as at one time or another on that board. So it's very interesting. And it is a, a very highly energetic but unrewarded board for the work that they do since they are volunteer through those applications. They sit down and have a very serious meeting to discuss how to allocate the limited dollars that we have to work with through FCSS. It's not a picnic by any means. We know that no one's liking to pick, but it's a process that goes through and it's well done. And I appreciate the volunteers giving up their time led by Patrick and the team at FCSS getting that together. So. I'll ask, is there any further questions? Not seeing any. I will look for direction on seven, sorry, six point four point one, Community Services Advisory Committee. Counselor Fagin.
I move that council approve the appointment of Sarah Patterson to the Community Services Advisory Committee. Services, sorry, just minimized on me for a two-year term.
Ending December.
Ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Counselor Buckingham, seconded. Thank you very much. Is there any further comments before I call for the question? Not seeing any. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thanks very much, Patrick. Moving on, six point five, operations. I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, worship, for six point five point one, ACO proposal, purchasing streetlights located on city-owned traffic signal facilities. I'll ask Executive Manager Don Stang to present.
Thank you, city manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before we have the ACO proposal, purchase streetlights located on city-owned traffic signal facilities. Administration is looking for council's recommendation to direct administration to enter into a formal agreement with ACO Electric to proceed with the purchase and ownership of seventy-five existing streetlights located on city-owned traffic signal facilities at the depreciated cost in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents plus GST. And that additional twenty-one thousand plus GST be allocated to pay a contractor for the required wiring alterations to thirteen sites and to add meters on seven consumption sites. In addition, the council authorized the total funds required in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents plus GST to be allocated from Transportation Services Capital Reserve GL account one dash three hundred dash three twenty dash three five one three zero. This is the same item that was discussed at the GPC on December seventh, two thousand and twenty, where administration presented that ACO Electric has presented a proposal to city administration to purchase seventy-five streetlights, which are located on existing city of Lloydminster-owned traffic signals. Part of the concern that ACO brought forward is at thirteen of these sites, the wiring is off the wrong side and has a potential safety issue as well as change or increased standards for the metering requirements from Measurement Canada. The other, the other item that was brought up through ACO's audit was seven sites are currently un-metered. And that the city Lloydminster potentially is paying more in consumption charges than, than what we're actually using. The ACO Electric brought forward during a recent audit, they found the streetlights located in city Lloydminster facilities were neither metered or on a flat rate. ACO Electric is proposing that the city purchase and take ownership of the existing seventy-five streetlights located on the traffic signals. In doing this by taking over or owning the seventy-five lights, the city will see a reduction in our monthly bill of twenty-seven hundred dollars. Though there, I'll get into that in a second. Purchasing the seventy-five lights would ensure new be metering standards are met and increase safety as well as the city would pay depreciated cost of the thirty thousand plus GST for the lights. Due to various streetlights, service scenarios, wiring alter, alterations would be required at thirteen sites to convert power to the roadside from the existing traffic signal service. It would be noted that the current wiring does not meet code and is a safety, safety issue. And the amount we've estimated for that is around ten thousand, five hundred. And we would need to install the meters at seven consumption sites, which would enhance requirements of Measurement Canada, and we've estimated that to be around ten thousand, five hundred as well. All traffic signal infrastructure would be properly installed and metered at a total cost of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eight cents. A correction to the report presented at the December seventh, two thousand and twenty GPC meeting is that the city's capital investment required to purchase the streetlights would seek a payback in just under twenty-three months. At the GPC meeting on December seventh, we had indicated that would be eleven months. That didn't include the cost to change over the seven meters. So we've increased that and we've presented you a potential payback of twenty-three months. It's determined by taking into consideration, the city would no longer pay the monthly fee of twenty-three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So essentially, the overall cost divided by twenty-three, twenty-five gives you the twenty-three month payback. And various options for council to consider, and I'll pass it back to you, your worship, if there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Executive Manager Stang. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Did some driving around trying to make sure I knew what I was talking about here. So I'll use sixty-second and forty-fourth as an example. That's one of these lights, isn't it? Because I was looking at it, and it's, you've got the traffic signal, then you've got a streetlight attached to the top of it that shines down on. So that would be an example of one of these lights, I'm assuming, because it's on city traffic hardware.
Exactly. That's exactly what we're talking about. So the city's always owned the David on top of the traffic. So the David is the steel pole where the street light is attached to. What we're, what we don't currently own is that physical street light. So that's what we're, we're purchasing back.
Yeah, I just, until this came up, I'd never really paid that close of attention, I guess, to exactly the placement of those lights at those intersections. And there, sure enough, there they are on top of the, of the traffic hardware. So I just wanted to make sure that was what it was.
Other questions?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just, this is one of those pieces that just makes my mind happy. When you put everything together, it's all looked after by the city. It, when you started talking about the fact that there's two power sources coming into one box that has light going to traffic signals and other to street lamps and, and, you know, from my, my experience in the oil field, that just is, I can get how it's scary and, and, and a safety hazard. So nice to see everything consolidated, everything straightforward in all our pieces of equipment. And in the end, there's a, there's a payback in the city in twenty-four months. And yeah, this is a nice piece, and thanks for organizing it with ACO.
Yeah, your worship, just to speak to that, I, I just want to point out, it was ACO Electric that brought this forward with all the concerns and safety issues. So administration can't take credit for that. It was an ACO Electric initiative. So at the end of the day, I, I do agree with you, counselor. It is, it is the right initiative to move forward with and, and trying to improve safety for everyone.
Thank you, Executive Manager Stang. Great question. The comments, Counselor Whiting. If I can, without diving into administration's duties, you, we talk about in this motion that you're asking for approval to, in essence, hire a contractor, which would be responsible for some of the work that needs to be done. Would that, that would be going through our city tenders process to obtain a contractor? Or is there something, because of being tied to the lights and tied to ACO, is that required? Would that be someone working through that? So elaborate on that, Executive Manager Stang.
Yeah, that, thank you, your worship. We'll, we'll follow our city Lloydminster purchasing policy with regards to how we would acquire the contractor for that. I know ACO Electric does provide that service as well as some other potential local and non-local contractors. So we will evaluate the work that needs to be done. We'll, we'll come up with a plan to rectify it and procure the best, which we, the best way that meets the city's needs and, and value moving forward. So we'll, we'll more, we'll follow the city Lloydminster purchasing policy for that.
I appreciate that, and that will be something that won't be back to this council table because it's, we're talking twenty-one thousand dollars, give or take, I believe, is allocated.
You're correct, your worship, unless it comes in over budget, then we'll obviously have to come back and ask for those additional funds. Like I said, we've worked with ACO Electric to determine a cost estimate, and that's what we're basing this off. So as long as it fits within those values, we'll, we'll award the work and get, and get the work completed.
Excellent. All right, that's my questions. Any other questions from any council member? Not seeing any. I will look for direction from council on six point five point one, the ACO proposal to purchase streetlights located on city-owned traffic signal facilities. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move that council direct administration to enter into a formal agreement with ACO Electric to proceed with the purchase and ownership of seventy-five existing streetlights located on city-owned traffic signal facilities at a depreciated cost in the amount of thirty thousand, six hundred and ninety-six, oh, eight, plus GST. And then an additional twenty-one thousand plus GST be allocated to pay a contractor for the required wiring alterations thirteen sites and to add meters to seven consumption sites. In addition, the council authorized the total funds required in the amount of fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six, oh, eight, plus GST to be allocated from Transportation Services Capital Reserve GL account number one dash three hundred dash three twenty dash three five one three zero.
Thank you, Counselor, seconded. Counselor Whiting, thank you very much. Any further discussion on this item before I call for the question? Not seeing any. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to six point five point two, city manager, or Executive Manager Stang?
Yeah, thank you, worship. Before you, we have write-offs for amounts deemed uncollectible for utility accounts. Administration seeking council's recommendation to approve the list of amounts deemed uncollectible for utility accounts as per attached utility, uncollectible utility account write-off list December two thousand and twenty, amounting to seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents be written off from the customer accounts. This will apply against existing allowance for doubtful accounts in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents for the two thousand and twenty fiscal year. As discussed at December seventh, two thousand and twenty GPC meeting, administration provided information to the committee regarding the two thousand and twenty utility accounts that are deemed uncollectible and that require write-offs for water, sewer, beverage, and stormwater. The attached list contains thirty-two utility accounts that are, that were closed in two thousand and twenty and represent uncollectible, uncollectible amounts up to November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty for a total value of that seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And council approve is, approval is required in order for administration to proceed with the write-off of the accounts deemed uncollectible for the utility accounts. Now I'll pass it back to your worship if there's any questions.
Thank you, Executive Manager Stang. Questions or comments? I believe this came up during the GPC meeting, Executive Manager Stang. I'll look to the CFO, too. This is down significantly from a year ago, and I believe we're well under budget to what the administration had asked for in the budget that was approved in two thousand and twenty last year for this year, the write-offs.
Yes, the, the dollar amount is, last, I, I do believe, and I think we talked about it at the GPC meeting on December seventh, that the last write-off was two years of write-offs, and this is one. But still a significant reduction in, in an annual write-off.
CFO? Leave you the comment.
That's correct. I believe we have in budget, I want to say thirty thousand, and this is significantly under that.
Terrific. Always good news on a budget. Counselor Dychuk.
Thanks, sir. So the other part, I think we talked about, I just wanted to make sure I got this right. But these amounts are now, doesn't mean that we won't stop seeking to collect payment for it? And what does that process look for, like, look like?
Yeah, thank you, counselor. Yes, my understanding is we will continue to try and collect. If any of these individuals or companies come back to the city to apply for a meter, these will be on record and will require full payment of these outstanding balances before they can get a new account. And my understanding is they stay in collections until they're, we deem that they no longer need to go through collections or until we do, do get a collection on. I do know some of the larger ones were companies that are no longer existent and, and out of business. So chances of us collecting a good majority of this are, are not that great. Although if that same company does come back in the future for another meter, we'll require them to pay that back. So.
So we don't use a collection agency or anything like that around this?
Yes, we use collection agency when it's over fifty-dollar, over a fifty-dollar amount. It does go to a collection agency. So these have already been at a collections agency for, for the past twelve months, is my understanding. So we do, we do have a process. I, I think it was in, in the GPC presentation. Under ten dollars, we try to, we try to collect on our own. Over ten dollars, I think, yeah. I think I miss, misspoke there. I think over ten dollars, but under fifty dollars, we try to collect on our own. Over fifty dollars, it goes to a collection, collections agency. We try to collect that for, for the previous twelve months. If it's uncollectible, that's what comes here for write-off. So.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction on six point five point two, amounts deemed uncollectible from utility bills write-offs. Counselor Torson.
I move that council approve the list of amounts deemed uncollectible from utility accounts as per the attached uncollectible utility account write-off list, December two thousand and twenty, amounting to seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents to be written off from customer accounts. This will apply against the existing allowance for doubtful accounts in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents for the two thousand and twenty fiscal year.
Thank you. Look for a second, Counselor Fagin. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the item before us? Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. I would entertain a motion to for recess for ten minutes. Counselor Dychuk. Seconded by Counselor Buckingham. Thank you. All in favor? We are recessed now till five after three. And we're moving on to six point five point three. I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you worship for six point five point three water treatment plant control systems upgrade consultant award. I'll ask James Rogers to come forward and present. Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Good afternoon, James.
Before you is the water treatment plant control system upgrade consultant award. The recommendation is that council approve the allocation of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. From the twenty twenty capital budget project number two zero four. One one zero eight water treatment plant SCADA replacement to the twenty twenty capital budget project number. Two zero four, one one zero seven. Water treatment plant front end engineering design and SCADA system of SCADA system, sorry. And that council proved the award of the water treatment plant control systems upgrade. Design and construction management to MPE Limited of Saskatoon, Saskatchewan. For two hundred and thirty seven thousand, two hundred ninety six dollars excluding GST. To be allocated from the twenty twenty capital budget project number two zero four, one one zero seven. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. In addition, that council approve a contingency allowance of ten percent in the amount of twenty three thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars and sixty cents. Excluding GST to be allocated from the twenty twenty capital budget project number two zero four, one one zero seven. The issue is that the city's water treatment plant control system is nearing the end of its serviceable life. With replacement components becoming obsolete and near impossible to find. The city's river pump house and water treatment plant were commissioned in nineteen eighty four. Since inception of these two facilities, additional facilities have been added to the system, including the Husky pump house and the West End reservoir. Minor upgrades have been completed to the control systems at each facility. But a complete upgrade of the overall control system is required to ensure that the water treatment plant. And its associated facilities are utilizing current technology and components that can be readily sourced in the event of a failure. An upgraded control system will help boost operational efficiencies. Warning and failure notification, assessment and correction, and system wide control integration. As approved through motion number three zero two, two zero two zero during the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty regular council meeting. A qualifications based selection or QBS selection procurement per process was used. The city issued a request for quotation document to procure the services of a consultant to complete all design. Programming and commissioning ma- commissioning management services for the project on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty. The RFQ package was issued and posted on the city's bids and tenders website. The initial, the initial evaluation criteria and associated weighting identified within the RFQ is summarized in the following table. It should be noted that a financial summary component was not included in the original evaluation criteria due to the QBS procurement method. The QBS procurement method seeks to secure the services of the most qualified vendor with the scope of work and financial summary components. Being determined through a collaborative approach after the selection of the successful candidate. The RFQ period ended on November thirteenth, twenty twenty, with twelve submissions being received and reviewed. The vendors and their associated scores are summarized in the following table. The scores above provided the evaluation team with two consultants who were shortlisted and invited to participate in the interview process. The interview process was included to further refine the scores. And evaluation weighting while fact checking specific items from within each consultant's proposal submission. The initial evaluation criteria and associated weighting were combined with the interview scores of the two selected consultants. The summary of the compiled scores is indicated below. Upon completion of the interview process and tabulating of the associated scoring, a letter of intent was issued to MPE Engineering. To collaborate collaboratively define the scope of work and agree on the financial summary components for the program. These discussions were carried out and the developed scope of work has been deemed advantageous to the city. The finalized scope of work includes the detailed design, tender package creation, tender administration assist assistance. Contract administration, SCADA programming and commissioning management of the upgrades. With one consultant completing all tasks, it is expected that both cost and time savings. Will occur throughout the tendering and commissioning portions of the program. As additional procurement processes will not be required for these services. As such, administration is recommending that MPE Engineering Limited be awarded the project due to having the highest overall score. Including those from the interview process. Zero to RFQ submission, interview process and project reference checks. MPE Engineering has displayed a high level experience and expertise in control system upgrades. In particular, those related to water treatment plants and other municipal structures. With that, I'll turn it back over to mayor and council for any questions you may have.
Thanks very much, James. I'll look to council for questions or comments. Counselor Whitey.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and I guess uh just bring us back to. Uh, cause we weren't here. I wasn't here and myself and Laura Lee wasn't wasn't here back in September uh regular council meeting. So this qua- qualification based selection. Procurement process was used. Just give us again, just uh a little bit more clarification on how that works. I think the questions we'll get is that we, you know, we don't see any numbers upfront. Or how this uh, you know, it is awarded uh as per um, you know, the best. I feel the best candidate uh was chosen. I always have faith in administration that that's done. We will get questioned that uh we may not have got the lowest bid in this in this situation and we we don't see the numbers to justify ye or nee of that, so. Can you provide just some a little bit more insight into to this whole system and and that part of it?
Yep. Uh, great question. So the call, the QBS system or qualification based selection. Um, seeks to secure the services of the most qualified. It takes out the financial component of that equation where somebody can have a a low bid or a low price. Uh, but maybe less qualified uh than somebody else uh on in that submission process. So it strips out the financial component and we are strictly looking for the most qualified. To help us with our program. Uh, if we go through a regular consultant procurement, we do have the financial score of thirty five percent. But this has, this has been wait pulled out from the QBS.
Yeah, I think just add to that counselor writing that the reason we went qualification base with the water treatment plant projects is because of the. The complexities that are integrated into the water treatment plant. When you start looking at. All the infrastructure, all the processes, all the SCADA and everything else. So. We felt as a as an administration, it was extremely important that we're not only getting. The lowest bid, but we're getting the most qualified consultant to perform that work to ensure that. You know, whatever we do today and however we. upgrade or implement new technology in the future, everything can integrate into that. So that's kind of why not a typical procurement process for us to go qualification base.
Yep.
The rationale was strictly around the complexities of the water treatment plant. We wanted to make sure whoever was coming in there had a good base understanding and had completed very similar projects on a large scale so that we are confident in them in delivering this project. So we didn't want anybody who could do SCADA. We wanted somebody who is very qualified in water treatment plant or process SCADA systems. So.
Yep.
Sorry, James.
Fantastic response. Thank you.
Any other questions, counselor? Certainly, James, from the perspective that it was alluded to the process. So the, the work that will go on MPI or MPE will be with us for something like, how long will this process last or stretch out this contract? Executive Manager, thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't know how to answer that exactly. Your worship, part of the process will be establishing what we have, how much, how much design work there needs to be done in order to put a project plan together. And then depending on the scale, the costs, we may be able to do it all in one year's capital, or we may have to phase that in over multiple year capital. So that's why I, I don't know how to answer that until we evaluate the process a little bit deeper, but it could be a multi-year project or the likely will be a multi-year project.
Depending on funding and, and costs that we incur. And I guess the important one I don't want to forget about is the pump house having the opportunity to toured that with city manager and city staff earlier this fall or late fall, the complexity of operating. I think that's for taxpayers. This is not though, I think every one of these companies do a great job in automation. SCADA in certain applications, we had some local vendors bid on it that are very familiar with the gas industry and multiple, multiple disciplines in engineering. But I think that I had a chance to review the MPE website. And they certainly, this is one of their mainstays from that perspective of dealing with water plants, dealing with the SCADA that operates those facilities and right up the alley of where we're at today. So I appreciate that being brought forward from that perspective. I just want to make sure we're crystal clear on the dollars and cents. So there was a budgeted amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand in two thousand and twenty, but we're also looking to go to the reserve remainder. Understanding that correct?
So we do have two programs, one for the front end engineering design. And we do also have one for the SCADA replacement, and that was intended for the actual hardware procurement and hardware installation. So by expanding the scope of work and determining the scope of work that is going to take a consultant to actually design and come up with an implementation strategy for that. We do have to pull from the, the replacement program, which is the hardware and the installation. But we do have other programs in two thousand and twenty one approved for the, the implementation and the hardware piece.
And just, just to add to that, your worship in two thousand and eighteen, when that my understanding, obviously it wasn't part of operations back then, but my understanding is they felt they had two separate projects. One was for their front end design work, which is essentially what we're contracting MPE to do. And then they had additional funds that would take that design and actually implement some of the SCADA into it and obviously do the complexities of that project. Over the last two years, we haven't moved anywhere. So what we're doing is we're taking both those budgets, mashing them into one project and we're gonna start with the front end, basically the front end design, do some of the design work and then we'll start procuring the cost from there. So so it's kind of evolved over the last three years, unfortunately, but that, that was kind of the approach they took.
Yeah, and I do understand. And as I looked at this, I kind of, we've got two different project numbers that were budgeted in two thousand and twenty. There was money allocated. So that money is coming out of the two thousand and twenty budget. Funds have been allocated and approved by council.
And I believe those were carry forward projects from eighteen. Yes, I believe those were projects we had budgeted for in eighteen and never executed on. So.
Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. Thanks, James. Is this, and Executive Manager's thing, does this also tie in with the chemical feeder system as part of this SCADA thing when they're replacing that and and upgrading and changing the technologies there? Does this allow for, is there intertwining there?
Yes. So we, we have a number of programs already ongoing at the water treatment plant, the chemical feeder system, the lime, the carbon. Those systems will all be integrated and be able to be integrated into this new system that we're designing. And that is one of our key objectives of this program is as Jamie works at the water treatment plant to, you know, bring on new processes, new systems, technology changes, this system will be able to adapt and expand to include those. Where our current system right now, we cannot. If we add something, it has to operate basically on its own. So by doing this control system upgrade at all plants, we can bring on our car, our lime and carbon feeder systems and anything else that Jamie does in the future.
Counselor Whiting.
Yeah, thank you. And I, to, to clarify, this, this is construction management in some ways again, after going through the qualifying bid. There is still equipment to be purchased at some point. Is that right? I just want to get that clear that this is for the
Yes, yeah. It, so we, we will have a fairly significant piece where we need to procure equipment. And we will need to procure the services of a contractor to install the equipment. MPE is not a installer and they are not a contractor or a vendor that supplies this hardware. They are, their services will end with commissioning support. There's a fairly significant computer programming, simulations, trials, tests that MPE is experts in. So they will help us bridge the gap between our project team, Jamie's operation team and the contractor who actually installs the hardware and the wire.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. I wanted to ensure that there is still again opportunity for, for local contractors and suppliers to, to provide the opportunity to bid on. Is it a bid process when it gets to that point again for the equipment and the installation and all that?
Absolutely. So that, that process will, we will work with MPE to determine our phasing. Whatever we have in phase one, if, you know, if we can do it all, we would love to. But we will have very detailed specifications. We will have very detailed quantities and bid items so that everybody that is qualified to do that work is on that level playing field. But yes, we do have a big procurement piece still to come.
Perfect. That's good. I, I do know we have some local contractors that I'm sure would be itching to, to, and, and I guess back to again, the previous contract management discussion, the, they will be, MPE will be looking after the tender process for, for future procurement, but it is, will it be sealed bid? Will it be with the assistance of admin for those future tenders for procurement?
So MPE will manage the tender process. They will put the documents together. They will control the tactics, technical specifications, the bid quantities, because they are the subject matter experts in that. But we will pull away from a construction management style project where the city of Lloyd will actually administer the tender process.
Okay.
So we will put the tender packages on our bids and tenders website. All packages will be received by the city of Lloyd and then we will share the information with the, with the consultant.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you, James. I was just going to reiterate that and I'm glad you, you mentioned that. This isn't, this isn't a construction management project. This is very similar to how we consult any, any other street improvement program, water sewer replacement. The only difference is instead of going out and asking for a consultant that had qualifications and evaluating price at the same time, qualification base is just their experience and their ability to do the work. How we move forward with a project, they'll do the design, they'll do technical specs, they'll do our tendering packages, but the tendering process would still be under our full authority and we would follow our regular procurement practices for that. So little, it's not, it's not construction management like, like some of the other projects we're currently in the process on. This was just hiring the right consor- or the most qualified consultant, now going through the process to do a design and bid build. So just to provide some clarity there.
Yep. Good clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Managers. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I will look for direction from council on six point five point three. And in consultation with the city clerk, we, we require two motions, please. Counselor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship. I move the council approve the allocation of one hundred and fifteen thousand from the two thousand and twenty capital budget project number two zero four one one zero eight water treatment plant SCADA replacement to the two thousand and twenty capital budget project number two zero four one one zero seven water treatment plant front end engineering design of SCADA system.
Thank you. I'll look for second to Counselor Dychuk. Thank you very much. Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any, I'll call for it. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Counselor.
Thank you, worship. I move the council approve the award of the water treatment plant control systems upgrade design and construction management to MPE Engineering Limited of Saskatoon, Saskatchewan for two hundred and thirty seven thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars excluding GST to be allocated from two thousand and twenty capital budget project number two zero four one one zero seven that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. In addition, the council approve a contingency allowance of ten percent in the amount of twenty three thousand, seven twenty nine sixty excluding GST to be allocated from two thousand and twenty capital budget project number two zero four one one zero seven.
You, second or Counsel Dychuk? Any further discussion? Counselor Whiting.
I think that's where I got that wording and I saw that construction management is there and.
Yeah, in a, as it replayed back, I understand why you would think that way. It is construction management and delivering a project like the fire hall is a very different construction management to what we're doing here. This is do a design, create the tender documents, put it out to public bid. And then that consultant will be on, on with us through the installation to ensure quality assurance, quality control. Sounds like they're going to help us do some programming and making sure everything integrates in, but it's, it's not construction management as.
Almost more like process management or something.
Project management.
Project management.
Is probably a good word. Project management, not, not in the sense the fire hall is construction management.
I just wanted to prove that I wasn't going crazy, that I did.
I, I understand where your question's coming from now.
Is there any other question? All right. Not seeing any. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six point five point four. I'll look to the city manager.
Thank you, worship for six point five point four direct control use approval home based business minor. I'll ask Anthony Andre to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council.
Good afternoon, Anthony.
The recommendation is that council approve the proposed home based business minor at the property located at one oh six forty eight oh four forty eighth street, subject to the conditions attached to schedule A. Council approval is required for this application as the property is located within a direct control district. Development permit application was submitted November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty to operate a home based office for bookkeeping and accounting purposes within the residence. The business will not result in client, client visits or include non-resident staff members. The applicant has submitted owner authorization from Canterbury Court Condominium Limited and approval from the condo association. The accessory, the accessory use is consistent with the municipal development plan and the mixed use transition area of the downtown area redevelopment plan, which encourages a mix of residential and commercial uses. In addition to this, the application conforms to all of the applicable provisions of the DC one district, which accommodates high density residential, office and multipurpose commercial uses. As home based business minor is listed as a discretionary use within the DC one district, the application was advertised on November twenty sixth in the Meridian Source to solicit comment from the public. All assessed property owners within a thirty meter radius of the site, as well as the owners of each of the twenty four condominium units within the building were notified by mail November twenty third. There have been no responses submitted in favor or against the application. As this application represents a discretionary use, council can add, remove or modify any or all conditions recommended in this report. Council's decision will be advertised in the Meridian Source, allowing for a twenty one day appeal period. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Questions or comments? Anthony, in your request for decision you just presented, there has been no change, no responses received or against it. So.
That's correct. We haven't received anything.
At all. Okay. Wanted to be absolutely cluster clear. People have had basically almost a month, three weeks to respond if there was concerns from individual landowners or property owners adjacent in the condo that they didn't feel comfortable maybe speaking out of through the condo association, but had the opportunity. Counselor Torson.
Thank you, worship. As someone who works in this world right now, I can tell you with certainty that client interaction is very, very rare, that people just drop things off and I could see why this person's not going to be having anyone come to their home according to their application. Pretty uncommon at this point.
All right. Any other comments? Well, I'll look for direction from council on six point five point four direct control DC one user approval. Counselor Whiting.
Thank you. I move the council approve the proposed home based business minor at the property located one oh six forty eight oh four forty eighth street illegally described as unit six and condo plan number eight six B zero one seven seven four, subject to the conditions attached in schedule A.
Thank you. Second, Counsel Wagner. Thank you very much. Any further discussion before I call for the question? Not seeing any. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, Anthony. And I look to the city manager, but I think it's going to go back right back to Anthony on seven point one bylaws.
Okay. The recommendation is that council grant first reading to bylaw number thirty nine dash two thousand and twenty, being a bylaw to amend the text of the land use bylaw number five dash two thousand and sixteen, respecting development permit validity. The finance department is in the process of reviewing business licensing procedures in order to create a streamlined application process for business licenses. The proposed text amendment strives to reduce overall time for many development permits required prior to the issuance of a business license. The current provisions state that a development permit is not in effect until twenty one days after the notice of decision has been issued, allowing for the expiry of the appeal period required by the municipal government act. Therefore, development or the new use of a property cannot commence within this time period. Legal council has drafted a proposed bylaw amendment which would allow developments for permitted uses to commence during the appeal period. As these are permitted uses, the likelihood of an appeal from a third party is low. It is important to note that the appeal period will continue to exist. However, development may take place during this time at the risk of the applicant. This practice, this practice is similar to several other communities, two of which were contacted, Leftbridge and Medicine Hat. They provided us with a little bit of feedback. Neither one has had any issues. Medicine Hat has been following this process for about seven years and they adopted their process based on Leftbridge, who again said that their, their appeal rate is roughly one percent a year. So it's, it's, it's fairly unlikely, especially for permitted uses. The draft changes would apply only to development permits for permitted uses, which would comply to all provisions of the land use bylaw and would exclude discretionary uses and those requiring any form of variance or relaxation of the standards. The draft amendment also extends the timeframe for which a development permit remains valid after a use has become inactive. Currently, the permit is considered void if the use has been discontinued for a period of six months. It is proposed that this be amended to twelve months to better accommodate seasonal businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Questions or comments? So Anthony, I just, as you were talking, I just made some notes here and, you know, some businesses that come to mind where this would be very applicable. So Anthony, I just, as you were talking, I just made some notes here and, you know, some businesses that come to mind where this would be very applicable. Maybe a hair salon where it's laid out as a hair salon, uh, it's closed for whatever reason, someone applies for new. Business license and that process, uh, if there is a development permit, some renovations, but it's still a hair salon. This could move forward such as that, or a restaurant, be two good examples.
Uh, that would most likely be two good examples, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Fagman.
Think that it's a great idea just to expedite things and the, the, the red tape side of things if we're trying to eliminate and. And expediate, this is, uh, this is great, so it's good to see it move in this direction. If it passes.
Absolutely, I think you hit it right on the head, councillor. The message that we've heard from businesses is to try and help. Move things forward from, uh, and that's been deemed at both provincial and municipal level here from the province are asking us what we're doing to do for red tape reduction. Just bits into it, giving businesses the opportunity to get started if that's what they want to do and, and move forward from that perspective. Uh, this will come, Anthony, as it's noted here, uh, if this approved, it will come to a public hearing, so people that may have concerns if. Cause there's always questions asked because there, you might have, uh, property owners that are in the business of renting property and wondering that they, before they. Do things, where does this fit, or maybe they won't see that, that opportunity does exist if they want to speak to us.
Yes, absolutely does, yep, it'll be advertised in the paper.
All right.
Thank you, worship, oh, it's good to see that we're looking at things like this. Um, I had the comments as late as last Thursday about how cumbersome and, and uh. Non appealing our process is when it comes to, to business licensing, so. Um, I think it's extremely important anytime, but especially in these times that we're as open for business as we possibly can and. Making these changes as, as we move forward to make that an easier process for people because I think the perception is out there that it's not. And maybe they're not wrong, so I'm glad to see we're working through these things, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction on. Seven point one bylaw number thirty nine dash twenty twenty, the land use bylaw amendment, first reading. Councillor Whitey.
I move that council grant first reading to bylaw number thirty nine dash twenty twenty, being a bylaw to amend. Bylaw to amendment to, bylaw to amendment, the text of the land use bylaw number five dash two thousand sixteen. Respecting development permit. Validity and that council established a public hearing to be held during the regular council meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty one at two P M.
Thank you, councillor, second to councillor Fagman, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you very much, Anthony.
Thank you.
Moving forward to. City manager, item number seven point two under bylaws.
Thank you, worship, for by law number, her number, item seven point two, bylaw number thirty eight dash twenty twenty, domestic animal bylaw, I'll ask Glen Alford to come forward and present.
Good afternoon, Glen. Glen, can we stop you just, just, yeah.
There we go.
There we are.
Um, the current bylaw we have in place is from twenty fifteen, it has served as well. And only required a few minor adjustments after review with. Uh, public safety team and the S P C A. The uh, key updates uh, in the animal control bylaw or the domestic animal bylaw. Would be to discontinue licensing of dogs and cats. Implementing requirements that dogs and cats be identified through a tag. Differentiating between attacks on other animals and persons. And to address domestic animal requirements in lands that are subsequently annexed during the life of this bylaw. At the governance and priorities committee meeting of November twenty third. Some recommendations and amendments were brought forward by the committee. And these have been adopted into the uh, bylaw before you today. Uh, those include definite, uh, definition updates of kennel, domestic animal and service animal. As well as the addition of uh, one section to deal with annexed lands and an updated penalty schedule to reflect adjusted section numbers. Uh, recommendations are that, uh, the council grant first reading. Uh, to bylaw thirty eight dash twenty twenty, the domestic animal bylaw. Or the council, uh, can request further information, have it brought forward at another council meeting for decision. The, uh, there is a minor financial impact to the S P C A involving, um, the licensing fees that would go to them. I averaged them out over the last few years and, uh, it does vary greatly, but approximately ten thousand dollars. Uh, of revenue that the S P C A would not see.
And you've had conversations with the S P C A and they're aware of that?
Their executive director, I've, I've talked to them. Uh, regarding that, um, they weren't, um, of course, uh, they did. Um, we did discuss it for some time, but when you look at the uh, savings with respect to not having to do any of the licensing and staff costs. Um, they, they were happy to support the bylaw the way it is.
Thank you, Glen, any questions and comments? Councillor Torson.
Uh, thank you, worship, yeah, just a comment, just thank you for incorporating some of the comments there that we had from our G P C meeting, you know, the livestock one was one that. Kinda came up and it looked like you've got it covered off now as far as annexation lines, so. I think it takes some of the confusion out with some of the varying things going on in the city, so I think. Overall, everything that we've seen and heard is, makes it a lot simpler, a lot easier to administer and. And again, a- as we talked about in the last item, the kind of reduce, reduction of red tape and costs where they're not necessarily needed. Uh, I think that we're doing that with this as well, so I think overall it's just a, a good move and the S P C A is good with it, so. Yeah, absolutely, I'm, I'm good with carrying on, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, I'll direct this to the city clerk, if I may, I'm sure you might be able to, Glen, but this does not require a public hearing for this bylaw?
This bylaw does not require a public hearing.
Okay, and I'll go back to you, Glen, if I may. Uh, this is not, I don't think it fits in the bylaw, but I was asked where does hamsters, et cetera, snakes, parrots and exotic animals fall? They don't fall in this bylaw, just people's information in our community.
Those other items would be covered by either provincial legislation or they're not spoken to in this bylaw.
Okay, is there any bylaws that you're aware of that deal with any of those other items in our community?
No, but it's, uh, they're still considered domestic animals under this bylaw, vertebrate or invertebrate, uh, that's domesticated. Or, uh, uh, for the, the, the owner.
Right.
Um, so it's still, there is still some regulation in respect to, um, the animal that they have. Um, this bylaw is more specifically geared towards dogs and cats.
Right.
Uh, but it is covered in there.
Okay, fair enough, so, cause most of them, as I listed, that were given to me, I said, I don't think they'd be outdoor, uh. That perspective, all indoor and absolute age, or however they might be. Uh, case of a parrot or something like that might be flying around somebody's house.
That's correct, your worship.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? I will look for direction then from council on the first reading of bylaw number thirty eight dash twenty twenty, the domestic animal bylaw. Councillor Fagman.
Thank you, your worship. I move that council, council grant first reading. To bylaw number thirty eight dash twenty twenty, domestic animal bylaw.
Thank you very much, second to councillor Aaron. Any further discussion, questions before I call for the question on the motion at hand? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thank you very much, Glen.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to bylaw number seven point three. I'll look to. The city manager in one moment.
Thank you, worship, for, uh, number seven point three, bylaw number twenty eight dash twenty twenty, the fire bylaw, I'll ask chief Lee Switkey to come forward and present.
Hello again.
Welcome back, chief.
Okay, we're here today that, uh, fire administration is bringing forth the council, uh, the first reading of bylaw number. Twenty eight dash two zero for twenty twenty, the fire bylaw. Uh, this is to provide council with revisions to fire bylaw number twenty five dash twenty fifteen. In twenty fifteen, council passed bylaw number twenty five dash twenty fifteen, which outlined a process for how the Lloydminster Fire Service and the public. Will operate with regards to fire protection within the city. Over the last few years, the fire service has seen significant changes, which requires a review of the current fire bylaw. This will allow the department to meet changing standards, operational efficiencies, growth and recommendations made within the fire services master plan. Some key changes to the bylaw include. Authorities of the fire chief and delegates, fire prevention programs and procedures, the requirement to report incidents, fire permits and fire bans. Um. Options are to grant the first reading of the bylaw, not to grant, um, approval of the bylaw. Or request further information at a later date, I'll pass, pass to council.
Thank you, chief, questions, comments from council? Councillor Burton, yeah.
Thank you, worship, the same question I have is what you just asked in the last one, um, is this bylaw, this bylaw also doesn't require a, a public hearing?
This bylaw doesn't require a public hearing.
So in that regard, has there been any? Feedback received or any feedback sought by us, uh, to the community at large, I'm thinking about specific pieces of this. Um, that were really ramping up in this particular version of the bylaw, um, with, with inspections and, uh, code. And all the different things in the fire systems and, and checking out fire extinguishers and all this in commercial properties. Um, so had there been any, any consultation with the public?
Uh, we've had, um, some consultation with the public, we haven't had any, um, negative feedback to it, we think that, uh. A lot of the feedback we've had has been, um, looking at the safety of the public in general and it's, and it's been positive on that note.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the, what we're trying to accomplish with it, of course, but, and when it comes to stuff like this, there are. And it's not, I don't want to say additional cost because it should be things that, uh, you know, commercial premises are doing already anyway. But when it comes to the enforcement of that and the fines and the procedures and how yours, you and your staff. Uh, carry out the duties of, of inspecting and doing these things, you know, in particular, the, uh, the fee on top of the licensing. Uh, to do that kind of thing is what I was curious as to what the general feedback was on that type of thing for both your procedural, uh. Workings and also just the general public's thoughts.
Sure, so at this time, we haven't received any negative feedback on any of the changes to the bylaw. From the public.
Any other thing I just wanted to note was the, the fact that that one provision within the bylaw takes effect a year from. Whenever third reading of this happens, when it comes to the lock boxes and things that commercial premises are gonna require to have done, so. We have ample time to advertise that and make sure that it's advertised properly so that there's no surprises for anybody a year from now.
Right, and we'll be working with communications and economic development on those, um, communication aspects of that portion of the bylaw.
Yeah, so I just, it's good that we're not passing a bylaw and saying effective tomorrow, you have to do this, right, cause that's a fairly major. Well, it's a significant expense.
Change.
And change, so it's, it's good that we, uh, took that into consideration as we move the bylaw forward.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, chief, when you presented this, I believe to the G P C, I had had some questions around, uh, fees and if I'm correctly, some of those fees were adjusted, is that?
Somewhere, yes.
Somewhere, so I certainly appreciate that, and I also appreciate, uh, as we look at this. Really, uh, we're moving a calendar day from the offense rather than a reset, I think that's important. Uh, again, education is gonna play a key role in all of these and in many cases. Uh, there's information gonna be presented, communications, I'm sure, I'll be leading in charge with the fire services to ensure that residents understand because. Leaving, leaving a, um, fire in your backyard unattended has consequences. I think people have to be fully aware and responsible for their, their actions and it's just to being complete, started the fire, make sure the fire's put out. Want to get on the Smokey Bear routine here, but, uh, simply the fact is that, uh, fire in a community is as bad as a fire in a forest. And we are very fortunate where we live, we don't have forest fires or, we're unaffected by smoke, but we're. We can still have a serious fire in someone's yard that can lead to multiple issues, multiple homeowners and families and things like that if they're not attended to properly, so. I appreciate that, uh, we've covered off a good portion of the items that, uh, well researched is what I'm saying from that perspective. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will look for direction from council on bylaw number twenty eight. Dash twenty twenty, the fire bylaw first reading. Councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship, I move the council grant first reading to bylaw number twenty eight dash twenty twenty, fire bylaw.
Thank you, second to councillor Torson, thank you very much. Any further discussion on the item? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried, thanks very much, chief. With that, we move to item number eight, mayor reports, uh, I've attached the report basically just up to the, uh. Just the end of last week, going into this week. Uh, some meetings of various sorts with ministries, ministers in Saskatchewan and Alberta, we've been chatting on a regular basis with. Minister McMorris, the Minister of Government Relations in Saskatchewan and, uh, during our meeting today, the premier spoke. And, uh, Dr. Shahab spoke to, uh, the regulations going around COVID in Saskatchewan. Um, I'll encourage people to reach out to the provincial website in Saskatchewan to follow along, there will be some changes, but, uh. There's, uh, we'll still be able to celebrate Christmas in a very limited fashion, uh, from that perspective, uh. The numbers continue to tell the story, uh, in conversations with other mayors and the premier earlier today. Uh, the healthcare system is under some duress in Saskatchewan. With COVID and certainly the encouragement is to limit people's, uh, visitations. This is a season when families often gather, friends gather to celebrate. And, uh, what we're being all asked to do is to maintain social distancing, reduce those numbers to your household and, uh. Use the, uh, internet, use the power of WhatsApp and all the other applications that are available on our phones and computers to reach out to our loved ones and friends that. We just can't have over this season. Um, about the premier, he said, this is a Christmas like no other, we do need to make some sacrifices and, uh. Let's get hope that next Christmas will be better and, uh, return to that and I appreciate those comments. Uh, he's a family man, as many of us around this table are, and I think he understands very fully because, uh. Of the weight and responsibility that carries at the provincial level and as it's been said in the media and I appreciate the media's support on this, getting the message out. City of Lloydminster Corporates Limits follow the Saskatchewan Public Health Act and all the Saskatchewan directives under COVID. So you are a business located in the city of Lloydminster, Alberta. Portion of the city, you still follow Saskatchewan, so, uh, there's been some questions asked in the public and by businesses and just want to again clarify that. For anyone that's listening, uh, from that perspective, if you have any questions, please reach out. To, uh, our economic development team here at the city, the chamber of commerce is quite aware of, uh, the regulations and things like that and they're all there to help serve. The industry or the business that serves us as well as residents, uh, we would direct you to the Saskatchewan. Uh, toll free number that they have set up for gathering information around COVID. Um, nothing, uh, further other than we've had some conversations with some ministries, uh, both as a city. As well as, uh, my role as the vice president of municipalities of Saskatchewan. Um, uh, done a lot of virtual meetings, the occasional in person meeting and that seems to be the state that we're in. And I just wanted to wish each and every one of the council members, their families, administration, our residents, another Merry Christmas. Uh, happy holidays and wish you all the best in the new year since this is our last meeting of the year. Uh, of twenty twenty and I can't tell you how much I'm waiting to get into twenty twenty one. And hope for better times, I think we've all seen and heard and felt, uh, the ramifications of what we've experienced for the last. Almost ten months and it's not been good. It's been challenging for our community, there's a lot of people hurting and I would encourage everyone to reach out to friends, neighbors, loved ones. If you see lights on and you haven't heard from them, reach out to them just to make sure that, say hello. And make sure that check in on our friends and neighbors because a lot of people that have been challenged this past year do the econ- the economics. As well as COVID and I just want to ensure that, uh, we've done as much as we can do for our residents, no matter what. I turn to council members if there's any other comments or councillor Buckingham.
Thank you, worship, um, as we, as we wrap up the final meeting of twenty twenty, I just wanted to take time to, um. To speak on some of the publicity we've got in the last week from both of the provincial premiers. For things that are happening within our community with Think Lloyd. for things that are happening within our community with Think Lloyd First campaign. And it's just one part of, uh, as a community leader, how proud I am of our community. Um, it has been a very challenging twenty twenty, but at the same time, it's been encouraging to see the resilience, the adaptability and everything that our community as a whole has done to, to weather this kind of storm. So it's not lost on me and I'm very, very, very proud of what the community has done. And we're all looking forward to a, to a better twenty twenty-one than we had twenty twenty. But at the same time, um, the innovation and ingenuity and the resilience of the people of our community has shone through a very difficult time with multiple factors between, uh, the oil prices and COVID and, and whatever else is going on in, in one's life. But it's, uh, it is somewhat encouraging, well, it isn't somewhat, it's very encouraging to me, uh, to see how our community pulls together and, uh, works together for the common goal and, and will come out stronger than we ever have before because of the people of, of our community. So it's a, it's a proud thing for me that I wish we wouldn't have had to gone through all this, but at the same time, uh, it's a, it's a very, uh, it's a proud moment to, to, for every member of our city, I think, to see how we're doing.
Thanks, counselor. Any other comments? Counselor Whiting?
Yeah, just a very simple one. As I cruised around, we had some very nice weather the other day, the other week, and, uh, just as I cruised around Lloydminster and I, I looked around, you know, just I think every hill in Lloydminster, uh, from Rotary Park to Bud Miller Park to, um, Anniversary Park, uh, I didn't get back by J C, but I know that it would have been busy. Uh, just, you know, really saw how our residents are, are utilizing our, our uh, recreation, um, our parks and that sort of stuff during that nice weather. And it's just, uh, uh, good to see. And I just wanted to make that comment that every hill was, was filled and people were outside taking in that nice weather. And I think we just, you know, I'm, I'm proud of what we have to offer, uh, even though maybe we weren't blessed with the exact geography features that some other places have, but, uh, what we do have was, uh, in well use during those nice, uh, warm days. Just, uh, a comment that I, that I saw in my travels around Lloyd.
Thank you, counselor. Anyone else have anything to add? Counselor Torson.
Thank you, worship. Uh, just as a private resident, I'm a member of the Lloydminster Health Advisory Council. Um, and one of the requests from the, the health authorities is that we continue to push the message, wear your masks, make sure you're not getting together in behind closed doors or whatever, and, and going around the health, uh, kind of guidelines and keep doing the right thing, washing your hands. Keep doing all those things and keep trying to take the pressure off of our health system. Uh, it will only help us get through this quicker. So please keep doing the right thing for all of you that are and all that are not. Try and see the light and start doing the right thing so that we can get through this a bit quicker. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Marin.
Uh, thank you, your worship. And so my husband and I were talking last night about how hard twenty twenty was and, and I kind of echo all the things that you said, but then we, I said, well, let's think of all the, the, the rich things that have happened, the blessings that have happened through, uh, twenty twenty. And we started to make a list about the connection and the, the the snow hills being used. And we have a little library in our backyard that's so well-used and people are coming and opportunity to, we just seeing people to kind of organically find these ways to connect and, and to build a resilience and our connection across neighborhoods. So it's been really wonderful to see. So I encourage people to just think about those things that they are grateful for. It really will improve your mental wellbeing and going into this Christmas season, um, to find those ways to connect, like you said, check in on your neighbors, give a wave, see how things are going for people, turn the lights on, do whatever it is, but, but create that all, your, create an, uh, a community for yourself, uh, to be part of and to make sure that you're, you're sharing that with others around you and and respecting all of those public health orders that we have. So, um, I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-one and I'm just grateful to be around this table with all of you. So Merry Christmas.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Dodgeak.
Thank you, worship. Um, I sit on the Pioneer Lodge Board and, and, and what it, in our meetings, it really sort of brings it home, uh, to me anyways, that, you know, the amount of effort and work that people put into trying to ensure that we have a, a safe community, a healthy community, uh, and the many challenges that they experience, particularly in the lodge around all the little steps that are occurring and adding new staff and, and monitoring guests and trying to find ways to, uh, create community as we've had referenced here earlier. Uh, but it also reminds me that of all the healthcare workers that are in the, in this boat now and thankfully are, you know, with V-Day, hopefully our turn within our community here will be, you know, quickly coming down the road where those members of our community that are really taking care of us. And that's just not the people in health, but police and fire and, uh, they leave their homes to take care of us and make sure we have a safe city. So I want to wish all of them well and, and acknowledge, I guess, the efforts that they put into making, uh, our city safe and, and a wonderful place to live. I also want to acknowledge, I guess, the work that our, our administration and, and IMT, uh, team has, has, um, has done or EMT? EMT, that T. Uh, I'm, I'm sure I got at least half of it right. Um, but it's been a challenging year and, and we talked about, you know, this is unprecedented. We've never lived through this before and the last pandemic has been a hundred some odd years ago. And this probably is the most publicized and most aware any pandemic, you know, a level of awareness any pandemic has ever had relative to things happening literally in real time. And, and we're experiencing it, experiencing it in a way that's never been experienced. And, uh, the challenges that are there, um, that from just, you know, even taking care of your family and uh, missing some of those connections you have with your family and other people that are close friends, but, um, it is different. It's unprecedented. And I think, uh, as, as we've talked about how our city and our, our colleagues and our community members are rising to the challenge, uh, I don't think there's a single person that doesn't want to see twenty twenty in the rearview mirror. So, uh, I'm all for twenty twenty in a rearview mirror and twenty twenty-one being an absolutely fantabulous, spectacular year for everyone. So.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Fagman.
Yeah, I echo, uh, many of the words that have been said. Uh, I certainly want to, uh, uh, to, to thank the administration for all the, the work that they've done in such difficult times, uh, in, in many different areas. I always say how, you know, how fortunate we are, uh, to have, uh, uh, people that are so involved and, and truly caring as well as our fellow, fellow counselors as well. And nice to have, uh, uh, two new counselors on board. That's, uh, that's great. Um, just a reminder for everybody as well as during these difficult times, so that we've got to remember our nonprofits throughout the, you know, throughout the city and, and what they're going through. A lot of them are struggling. And I think that, uh, we just need to, uh, to keep those in mind. And if you have a few extra, few extra dollars to, uh, to help them out, they're trying to do their best to, to deal with those that are, that are feeling some of the, this difficulty and, uh, I just ask everybody to keep that in mind and, uh, wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Whiting.
One last thing to, to mention in, in saying that and, and that this week, I just want to pump a couple of things that, that, uh, the parade of lights is on Thursday. That's, uh, one thing that will be um, done a little bit differently, but, uh, will be also offered virtually to through myself and Kirk Price to the public out there. And that's something to take advantage of as well as tomorrow, the Health Foundation doing a twelve-hour radioth on, uh, kind of to what you were saying that, uh, the, to raise some money for the, for the good work that the Health Foundation does. And so definitely watch, uh, virtually for that one as well. And I just want to put on record that, uh, uh, wishing my dad a happy birthday here on this past, uh, Sunday, turns seventy-five. So I had to put that in there.
Thanks, counselor. With that, is there any other matters that this council needs to deal with at this time? Not seeing any? I will move to inquiries from the media. Thank you very much. With that, I'll look for a motion to recess. Counselor Dodgeak motion seconded by Counselor Fagman. Thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? Carried?